We're ready.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Stockbridge Planning Board meeting on November 7. And today on the agenda, we have, we have a long agenda, actually. We have seven items. We start by reviewing the minutes from October 17. We have two special permits and two sign requests and a sketch plan review for Mohawk Lake Road. Six items. All right. So we will start with the special permit.
The meeting minutes?
Oh, minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes?
Yes, and I have something to omit.
Okay.
I was not here. This is the one meeting I missed. I'm sorry. That's okay. You just knew I was always here.
I was, and I wasn't either.
Oh, you weren't either? So that's two.
Earl was.
Wayne wasn't either.
I can have them in front of me.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so we can make those changes, I think. Does someone want to make a motion to approve them with those changes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a special permit. This is a public hearing for a property located at 17 Mackinac Terrace in Stockbridge on the lake. The following procedures will be followed. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair and in voices that are clearly audible to all meeting attendees. Civility is always encouraged. Arguments between parties will not be permitted. So do we have, for anyone who's speaking, if you could please come up to the podium and stick your name and address? Do we have the presenter here for 17 Mackinac Terrace?
Where are the applicants? But Brian Sider was going to come and make the presentation?
Yeah.
Give him the minute.
Forsyth.
Yeah, we can, we can change the order. How about, are the applicants here for 25 Church Street? Okay. Do we have a sign request? Here. Come on up.
Sit right here. Yes, sit at the table.
All right. Okay. So I'm Tiffany Greendale. We own the Elm Street Market and Tiffany's Cafe at Form 4 Elm Street in Stockbridge. And we are requesting a sign. One, it's illuminated, yes. I understand that. Very simple. I did a lot of research on it. It's not obnoxious in any way. Doesn't blink, not double, any, just one light, one color, and it just says open. And if you drive by our store, you'll see there, yes. So you'll see that there are times that, because the sun beats into the windows there. And even when we had the canopies, nothing worked. So we got, we have shades that roll down. When the shades are down, it looks like we are boarded up, basically. So I bought this sign to put on so that we can say we are open. The, prior to that, I had the flip sign in the door, and I don't know if you have been in the store, but that sign kept sliding and getting caught and breaking, and it looked horrible. So now we have our hours of business on the door, and that's still not enough. So we just, I bought the sign, and I did not know of the bylaws. So we are here for a permit if we could. We have not turned the light back on since we realized that.
Okay. So you're, you are aware of the, the-
I am aware of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is it, is it illuminated or?
It is a light. So that would be illuminated, yes. It is a light.
Okay. So, you know, the wording reads, no sign shall be illuminated by other than-
I understand that. I understand that. But I'm saying, excuse me. For one, I mean, I would rather have an open sign in my window than a for sale sign or a for lease sign, which there is so many of on Main Street. I mean, we are one of the only businesses in town, and all we're trying to do is draw business in and keep us in business. So that is all. It's literally this big. It's not like it's a giant sign. It's not, it's seven-
And when you say, what would be this big?
It's about this big. It's seven inches by, like, twelve.
Eighteen by six.
Okay. Yeah. Six, eight, twelve inches. Right.
Do you feel like it has to be lit?
I think that it actually drew, people were coming in going, oh, my God, I love this sign. It's amazing. You know, if we just have, like, the open sign on the door. If you're driving by, and especially at night, you're not seeing it. And right now, it's not like we have a lot of streetlights there that are lighting up, and you can't see. It wasn't just our problem, even with the Red Lion had it before. They said you're going to have so much trouble with people knowing that you're open because you can't see the lights even on the inside of the store at certain times. So it's been a struggle, and that's all we're doing is just trying to keep in business and let people know that we are actually open. You know, I know, I'm not on Main Street. None of my, our building is not in any of the Norman Rockwell paintings, you know? And honestly, Norman Rockwell was an activist, and he fought for change. So I'm here saying, you know, I just, I'm just trying to let people know that we're open.
I mean, I'm aware of the language of the bylaw, but, I mean, are there any other circumstances where there are illuminated signs in town? But I mean, I'm just trying to think.
There was a sign across the street from us, and they have since taken it down. They had it up for about a year because someone went through their window. And when they were doing, under construction, they had the windows boarded up. So they put up a blue and red open sign that actually had, like, different colored lights and everything, and that was up for a year. And no one had any problem with it whatsoever. The morning after I lit my open sign up, I had someone in my store telling me that it's against the bylaws, and I needed to take it down.
May I speak?
Oh, why don't you come on up?
Sorry. This is my husband. He's also the co-owner of the business.
Come on up and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Chris Greendale.
Hi.
The, to answer your question, the lottery signs at the gas station.
Oh, yeah.
But because it states that it's-
It's state, I know it's stated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jennifer told me.
Yes. But it doesn't, I mean, it's just-
I mean, I understand, you know, your concern. I was wondering if there isn't some way you can light it?
How are you, how am I going to light it?
Well, you know, other people do, you know? If you can use some sort of downward directed above it to, you know, or use a different material that may be sort of reflective material that isn't-
That's not going, I mean, I don't, unless you're, a reflective material is only going to show if a light is shining on it. So unless you're pulling up to the store with your headlights on it, oh, they're open. But if you're driving by and you're just looking over, then you're not going to see that. You're not going to see it, you know? And I think that the bylaws need to be revisited. You know, it's unfortunate, but if you ask any 20, 22, 25-year-olds who Norman Rockwell is, they really don't know. So in order to, like, you almost need to do, like, almost a rebranding of the town because at some point, the generations that do know of Norman Rockwell are going to die out. And what is going to be the draw into the town? So I mean, here, like I said, I'm one of very few businesses in town, and all I'm trying to do is let people know that I'm actually open. And to, and we've tried everything else. I don't, I, sorry, I didn't realize that this was going to be-
May I ask how much the sign that you already purchased cost?
It was, it was like a $50 sign.
Yeah.
You know? And, and I did. I looked online, and I was very specific. I wanted it to be very clean-looking.
Yes.
You know, and it was. And it's not even white. It's like, it's like a bluish color. It's a very clean-looking sign. So that's-
This picture makes it look really big.
It's really not. It's really, it's only about, and the background of it is the blackboard that it's on is the part that is six inches. So the letters are probably maybe even four inches from top to bottom.
I mean, what if you were to do, you know, like in museums where they, you know, have a light sort of over a painting, that type of thing? I mean, what if you were to just, I mean-
Is that a possibility? That's what I was thinking. Is there a way to do something to project the light onto your sign from the inside?
I mean, you know, Tiffany, the problem for us is, like, I, you know, you make a compelling argument, for sure, and I go by and I saw it's pretty small, you know?
Yeah.
I get it. But the problem for us is precedent. So, you know, we do-
So you don't want to revisit the bylaws at all? You don't think that there needs to be change in the count?
That's a separate question.
Okay.
Nothing's going to change.
I mean, you're, you're here asking for-
That's the problem for you, which is going to be more problems.
Right, exactly. I mean, it's still, like, if I have my window shades down, then what? Then I have nothing, it looks like I'm closed. Looks like I'm closed. There's nothing. So I don't know how I'm able to put another-
Maybe talk to a designer or someone.
Well, and that's, so that's also money. And we're a very small business, and we rely on people walking through the door, which is why I have the open sign.
Just out of curiosity, how many, I mean, how much space do you have between your blinds and the actual inside of the window?
Between the blinds and the window? Probably about this far.
Yeah, so it's not much. Yes.
It's only a couple of inches.
I'm sure you've thought of all this prior to tonight, but what would, what would make it legal, right? Would be that-
So you're okay if I put a light that is illuminated, it's shining at my building?
Shining on the sign.
Right on the sign.
Downward, downward, you know, downward direction.
Like what Nate James has across the street.
I mean, I think it's, you know, pretty clear, just shaded or indirect. I think there's probably a way for you to, to figure this out.
Okay. I'm going to take it down.
It is against-
I'll take it down because this is, no, it's, it's, I'm sorry, but I just think that it's, you know, we're one of the only businesses that is trying to stay in business in town. And if you go up and down Main Street, you've got four to five for sale or for lease signs. We're right around the corner. I think that's a bigger problem than an open sign. But that's, that's that. Okay.
We do appreciate, we do appreciate the business.
Oh. It's okay. All right. We'll take it down.
Just trying to look for options because-
Well, I mean, and you have, you have, you have all sorts of things that, I mean, people have gotten permits for lights on Main Street that are lighting up signs on Main Street. Look at Taggart House. Taggart House's sign is lit up, right? But that's actually, but it's also, they're not supposed to have any illuminated lights on Main Street, da-da-da-da-da, even on a sign. They got a permit for it, but their neighbor couldn't.
I, I think, I think the, historically speaking, you know, when this bylaw was put in place, you know, I think the concern is about neon. And obviously, this is not a neon sign, but it's, you know, it's an LED sign that, like, you know-
It's a light bulb.
Begins to, begins to, begins, begins to head in that direction. And, and in terms of changing the bylaw, that's a huge-
We just did the, did the sign by law.
I know. You should think about these things, I mean, if you're going through the bylaws and changing these things, because it is, I mean, you have to keep up with the times. I mean, and like I said, it's, so if you're trying to keep up with the Norman Rockwell look, it's not, but what is it then? Why can't you, you just don't like signs?
Lighted signs was what, when they did this bylaw, they didn't want lighted.
Neons.
And they did up.
Why? Why, though?
Because it's a little more Las Vegas than we want to go.
It's a one, it's really four letters that says open.
But that's how we, that's where we go. We go to Las Vegas instead of, like, it's really-
There's four businesses in town.
I know.
I mean, really, there's like, there's very, very few of us. There are very few of us.
I'm just trying to make something work here because, and I don't know, I don't know the specifics of the space, but I, I don't want you to go out of here without something there that would allow you to show that you're open. I couldn't agree with you more. We need to keep business in town. We're desperate for it.
Oh, we are.
Couldn't agree with you more. I'm just trying to figure out what might work for you and-
I mean, you can't make any type of, well, you know, we can make an, an exception or something because I filed the papers for a permit. I'm asking for a permit to have this sign.
And just to the whole group here, I mean, practically speaking, making an exception for the sign we have a picture of here, which has been up there for how long?
We put it up, and the very next day, someone came in and said something. So we turned it off.
That's why I haven't seen it.
We've turned it off. No, we had it up one day.
But the sign is up.
The sign is there, but it's not lit up. It's not lit up. So you can't, you don't even know that we're open. You know, I mean, you, it's not lit up.
I drove by, and I thought you were because the open sign was there.
But it's not lit up.
I know.
I thought you were open because the lights were on.
Right, well, yeah. Yeah, but let's say 3:00 in the afternoon, when you're not seeing the lights inside the store because of the way that they hang, you know? I mean, it's, it, well-
Are you-
The hours, like, in large font on the-
We're open until 7:00 PM.
Until 7:00.
So it's dark.
Tiffany, what about just, you know, right on the front door, putting the hours in large?
I have them. That doesn't matter, though. I mean, if you're driving by, can you look in and go, oh, I can read that they're open right now from your car? No.
How about hanging, hanging a sign from inside, you know, sort of from the ceiling? That would be visible for someone driving by.
The blinds you were talking about?
That's the whole point.
We have blinds and-
You can even see that yellow part on the top is the top of the blind. We haven't lowered it. But when that goes down, it's a completely whited-out section of, that closes off the entire window, so you cannot see.
If that could be lit from the front side, the street side of the window and project onto the open sign, we're allowing that, right?
Right. How do you, how do you allow it?
That doesn't matter. I can't, I have to buy a whole new sign. And then we also have to get lighting.
From inside.
Yeah. Yeah, no, but externally.
But you, hang on. And, but, but we're not going to allow this to be lit itself.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So then I have to pay for an electrician, and then I have to have all of this run, and then I have just to light, you know, have a light projecting onto a sign inside of a window.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You have a front door, and there's, there's a walk into the front door. So there's room from above. If you put a light above and you put an open sign on-
I do have a light above. I have an overhead light above it.
I know it's overhead. I know. I'm, I'm suggesting that you have, you change it so that it turns in, or you add something else that turns in.
So again, it's more money for me to actually have an electrician come in. And trust me, we've had to shut down, like, four times in the past couple of months because of the sewer backups. So I'm not bringing in any income even because we've had to shut down our store on Columbus State Weekend because this happened, the torrential downpour.
We don't, we don't have-
So I get that. But, but what I'm saying is I don't have the money to pay for an electrician to come in to put up a light to illuminate or to light up a sign that I can't light up. It, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I'll just take it down. So that's that.
It has to be. Well, we'll try and think of some other things. Do you have, is there some way you could put, like, a planter in front of your window, and then you could put a sign there?
It's a nice idea. Looking to illuminate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have to, have to have people see it. And I, I mean, if I'm putting, I only have the little spot, I have two tables out front, so I don't want to take up that space either.
Yeah.
You know, because that's the only outdoor dining I have. I'm only allotted 19 seats in the building as it is, you know? So I mean, we're, we're restricted in so many different ways. It's not even, yeah.
I don't have a problem with this, but the bylaw does.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's not obnoxious. It was very, I, I did a lot of research on the sign, found something that I thought was very clean and appropriate, to be honest, but-
It is. The sign is really good.
And people were coming in like, wow, this is beautiful. We love this, you know, like, you know, it's great, and now it's eye-catching, and we want to come in, and it's so, but, and then-
To Carol's point, you couldn't look at this and-
Right. You're in the right place.
Make-
If you make an exception, it's just changing the law.
Okay. That's that, sorry. Okay. Have a good night.
We're sorry, Tiffany. Chris, sorry.
Fill that to the zoning board of appeals?
The ZBA. I don't know if the ZBA would do a sign for that, would it?
I'll check on it. Oh, yeah, they did already. They did?
Oh, they did?
Well, that's why, that's what I'm wondering if the board of appeals, but if they appeal to the board of appeals.
Yes, we can. Okay. So, um, we have- Is everyone ready?
Discretion.
Discretion on other things, but we don't have discretion on that. We always-
Yeah, the problem is, this law was in.
Okay. All right. So next up-
Did a sign.
You ready? All right. So next up, we have a special permit for 17 Mackinac Terrace. Is someone here? Okay. I now declare the public hearing open. I read the procedures previously. Same procedures. Civility, one at a time, discussion through the chair, and testimony limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. And you are, can you introduce yourself, please?
Brian Sider. I'm with Forsyth Land Services.
Okay.
Civil engineer for the project. And David and Ruth are here. They are the owners of the property. And we are just seeking to add a deck to the existing house that's existing at the property, which falls within the LPOD district, about 85 feet. Existing house is about 85 feet from the lake. The deck will be within an existing corner of the house, no closer to the lake than the existing structure. It's raised up on the, the first story of the house on one corner post, like a six-by-six post that'll be hand-dug to support it on the exterior corner. So again, two sides of the deck, it will be supported by the house, and then the exterior corner here is, again, not as close to the lake as the house, and it's six by six, that'll be-
Which is what's shown here in this elevation?
Yep. This is an architectural drawing, and the deck is shown here on the first floor. It's a walkout basement below it. The existing area where it's going is essentially wood chips, some landscaping, so it won't change the ground cover in any way. And this went through the Conservation Commission last month for a request for determination, which received a negative, negative determination for the altering the wetland in any way. So negative is good in that case. Sorry. So it was approved by the Conservation Commission, saying that it's not doing any detrimental harm to any of the wetland resources, which in this case is the lake. So this green line is also the wetland buffer, which is 100 feet from the, the lake front.
And the, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. Oh, the overall dimensions? Oh, here it is written, yeah.
Yeah, it's, overall is 112 square feet, so it's just over that threshold of 100 feet where it wouldn't be required for a permit. It mentions itself, I think it's 11 and a half by nine. Yeah, so a total of 112 square feet. It's pervious. The deck boards will have space in between them. And we also have submitted a special permit for this, for the, because it's an existing non-conforming structure, but it won't be any more non-conforming than the houses.
Is the deck going to be covered? Is it a covered deck?
It is not, no. Open deck, accessible from the house only, so no stairs. And so just an open deck.
So it'll never be turned-
At the first floor, so it's, it's eight feet near.
So it'll never be turned into a room?
That's not the intent, no. It won't be a finished insulated space. It's just an outdoor deck.
But it won't be converted at some point?
You could make that a condition if you want.
That would be a special, another permit. Special permit to do so, yeah.
Okay. So we have David Cameron here, and he is supporting the board, and there's some questions. So one correction I would make here is that because this is in the R2 district, the lot coverage, about 15%. And I think David's question speaks to that, and I'm going to let David articulate that.
I guess the first question I should ask is whether or not Forsyth has had the opportunity to read the letter report I put together?
No, I have not seen that.
Okay.
Was that sent to maybe Mark Vogel?
Yeah.
No, it was provided to the planning board yesterday morning, so.
Did not get a chance to see that.
Okay. So my, I, I think relative to the, the issue that Kate just addressed, you guys put some land use tables together on page, it looks like it's, well, it's right after the LPOD checklist in the application.
Third page, yeah.
Yeah, which is actually very well-done and very helpful. And the table that I was concentrating on in particular is the one at the very bottom of that page, specific to the, to the LPOD. And I guess I just want to make sure that I was interpreting that table the correct way. So it says 15% coverage allowed in the LPOD, and then there's a row next to it that says 11%. I'm not exactly sure what that means.
So 11% was the proposed, or the current usage. It's actually, so the proposed 11.4, I think that actually is a typo. That should say 2,000, roughly 2,000 square feet, which is 15% of the total.
Okay. So I guess the way the ta, the way the table is formatted, I guess, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sense of it. So maybe, maybe if, if a revised table was offered up, that row next to 15% coverage in the LPOD would just be blacked out because there's nothing to really say there, right? You're just, you're just trying to set, set the stage for, like, what's existing, right? So the next row down is the area of Lake and Pond Overlay District, LPOD. I think that's where you're trying to state what the existing square footage of LPOD is on the lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So that, that says 13.900 square feet, and I'm guessing that period is supposed to be a comma. Is that correct?
That is a comma. 13,900 square feet, of which it should be 2,000 square feet, would give you your 15%. And again, so what it's saying is that we're proposing to use less than 15%, only 11.4% within the LPOD.
Okay. So I, I guess, if you guys are... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Definitely provide an updated chart. I think you're, you're correct on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, this, this all comes down to just relaying the information in a way that's clear for the planning board to understand. So I, I, like I said, I think I got the gist of what you guys were trying to say. But I would, maybe that, those first two rows, I might, I might not, I, I might not include those. I might just scratch those if you're going to provide a revised table. And then just jump down to the next one, which has the column that says house deck total, and then the existing and proposed columns. I think those are helpful. So, or, and again, I see periods in places of commas. So the house is not one point four two one square feet. You guys are, I think what you're suggesting is one thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet, correct?
Correct again, yeah.
Okay. So I, I did an independent takeoff, probably not with the same degree of accuracy as what you guys have with site survey. And I, what did I come up with? I came up with, bear with me. I came up with twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet for the existing LPOD on the lot. And the existing house, based on the takeoff I did, is about sixteen hundred and seventeen square feet. I mean, we're, we're close with those numbers. So I think in my report, what I was suggesting is if you, if you guys could provide a little bit more detail with respect to how you arrived at those dimensions for everything, it might be easier for the, for the board to...
I mean, the bottom, you know, the thing is, though, is that in the R2, if you look at our bylaw, six point five point three, the LPOD is an overlay district mapped over other districts where there is an inconsistency between the requirements of section six point five and the regulations otherwise applicable in such other districts, the more restrictive provision shall be deemed to apply. And then the R2, that's ten percent lot coverage in the LPOD.
That's correct, but the building lot is larger in area than the LPOD area. So we're meeting both the, we're only using eight percent of the lot coverage.
I think you, what you need to indicate is the coverage in the LPOD as being ten percent or less, so...
No, because we can be up to fifteen percent.
That's, that's where, that's where I disagree. And I, you know, I think this...
I agree with the, the more restrictive would, would matter, but we're also meeting with ten percent building lot coverage because the lot is larger than the LPOD area. So there's more area on the lot than there is within the LPOD. So we're using eleven percent within the LPOD district, but only eight percent.
Well, but the bylaw speaks to fif- fifteen percent in the LPOD. And this is the, this is wording in the LPOD, so...
Well, it's not based on percentages, it's based on the restriction.
I think we're going to agree to disagree here. And, you know, in fact, I have checked that with, with council, so...
David, do you mind weighing in on that?
I, I, I actually don't have an opinion about that particular issue because I, I kept my reviews specific to the LPOD provisions. My, my only, my only comments related to like, let's just at least figure out exactly what the LPOD is on the, on the lot and exactly precisely what the proposed, what the existing coverage, or existing developed area of the LPOD is and what the proposed is. Because we can't, we, we can't assess anything until we get those numbers correct. And they're as expressed right now, I'm not, I'm not convinced they're correct. I'm not saying necessarily they're wrong, but the way they're expressed right now, it's, it's hard for me to follow the tables.
That's fair, I just wonder how you're getting your numbers scaled off a scale drawing or...
So what I did is I, I, I used two different sources. I used MassGAS and I used Google Earth. Now admittedly, those are not, those are a crude way of doing it. And I'm not saying that those, my numbers are right and yours are wrong. I'm not necessarily saying that. But I think if, if you guys want to really demonstrate exactly what your numbers are, that you should, you should make some clarifications to the site plan, showing precisely, okay, like this, this bump out of the house is this many square feet. This, this first floor is this many square feet. Just make it clear, right? I mean...
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, you know, continue the public hearing and, and, you know, do some more work on it. I would...
It sounds like we'll definitely have to provide an updated chart, but we're still at the, I think, in an impasse where my understanding of the bylaw is that the more restrictive would apply, but in this case, we're meeting both.
Well, who's your attorney? Is it Alex Glover?
Alex Glover.
Yeah. I mean, she's actually the one that explained that to me. So, you know, what I'll do is I will double check it. Why don't you work on your figures? In the meantime, I will double check it with our town council and get back to you on that. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Carl?
And you mentioned that if this proposed deck were under a hundred square feet, that this would be by right? Is that correct? Is that correct?
I don't interpret the bylaw that way myself, but...
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just questioning. Because, I mean, you know, I mean, it says here one hundred and twelve, you said a hundred and nine, whatever.
I'd have to be reading off it, but I believe it doesn't seem like... Structure under a hundred square feet does not require a special permit under the LPOD. It's my understanding.
You think that's for a shed?
Larger, for a shed rather than an addition onto a house.
You know, I can double check on that.
It follows.
I'll, I'll double check on that.
Hey, hey, sorry to interrupt before you guys close this out. There, there was one other comment or question I had that wasn't expressed in my letter. And just bear with me a second, let me go back to that table. So it's the second portion of the LPOD table. It says the existing deck is fifty square feet and the proposed is one hundred and sixty-two square feet. I did a very brief site visit several weeks ago. Maybe I missed it. Is there, is there a deck there already that's going to be expanded to, to create this new one?
There's an existing deck on the opposite side of the bump out with the stairs.
But that's enclosed, that's enclosed, no?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, so that's a, that's a separate feature from what's being proposed.
Correct, that's existing, yeah. And I can, I can bring some photos as well in my house.
Okay, so you'll, you'll work on it some more and I'll continue the public hearing to a set date of, I guess, we're going to meet on the twenty-first. Okay? Is everyone good with that?
Yep.
All right, so, yeah, thank you, Gary. Yeah, did anyone, um, hold on a sec. Let me just look at my little cheat sheet instructions from Michael. Okay, so any more questions? Nope? Okay, does someone want to make a motion to continue the hearing until November twenty-first?
So moved.
Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, that's one down.
We should make it a condition that they can't build out.
Well, that's later. Okay.
So it's not lost.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, next up, we have a special permit for twenty-five Church Street. The same procedures that I read for the previous. And you guys can come up and introduce yourselves. Is Jane here? No?
She's not.
Okay. Rob, did you have a chance? I got your message. Did you have a chance to look at the posted material from David?
No.
Okay.
Where was it? That I did not see.
On the website.
No, I was on the website this evening, I did not see it.
All right, so, um, do you want to present?
Sure, love to.
Okay, will you introduce yourselves?
Love to.
Okay.
I'm Rob Ackroyd from Greylock Design, representing Jane Weber, twenty-five Church Street. With me this evening is the distinguished architect Jeff Simpson. We have, happy to walk through what we're discussing. I have not seen Mr. Cameron's comments. I did do a site walk with Mr. Cameron quite some time ago. Jane Weber has a property on twenty-five Church Street. There is an existing house on the property and there is an existing garage on the property. Our proposal, quite simply, this drawing here shows the Housatonic River. We have the inner riparian zone, which is a hundred feet from mean annual high water line. We have the outer riparian zone, which is two hundred feet from mean annual high water line. And the LPOD line, which is a hundred and fifty feet from the mean annual high water line. The existing structure is blue for the residents and it's this gray, which is the existing garage. You can see there's a very slight sliver of the existing garage that is within the LPOD. This garage is slated to be removed. It's also a non-conforming structure as it resides in the side yard setback. Our proposal is to add on to the existing residence with a kitchen and a garage slash office, excuse me. And then also to extend the driveway so that it can actually gain access to our garage. That has a very slight increase in the structure that will reside in the LPOD. And then there's an increase of paving that will reside in the LPOD. We have been before the Conservation Commission under a notice of intent for work within the riparian zone and also work within a land subject to flooding. We've received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. I apologize to the board for missing the site walk, which was a couple of weeks ago. And I have not seen David Cameron's comments, but I'm sure they're going to be illuminating. I'm happy to drill down on any aspect of this and discuss any part of it in detail.
Do you by any chance have a copy of the order of conditions? Because we don't have this.
I can let you look at it, but you cannot have it. You can make a copy and give it back to me. Pete, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Sprague. One, the one, the one condition in which Jane was, was more than happy to comply with is we agreed from thirty, from the top of bank back thirty-five feet, we would cease all mowing and maintenance and we would begin planting those with pollinating perennials.
Did you hear that, David?
Yes.
Okay.
So that...
And that was my understanding, based on the site walk that Rob and I did several weeks ago.
Yeah, Dave and I romped around for a little while a few weeks ago. We, we will be planking this. We had a conversation with Jane about pollinators, about, you know, timing of the year, butterfly pollinators, bee pollinators. Jane has embraced it and is looking forward to doing it, quite frankly. So I think that's, I think you know, now know as much as I know.
I don't, I've never seen these before. Can you tell where they are?
Is there a basement under the new...
Is there a basement under the...
The what?
A basement.
Under the new park.
The basement is underneath this part. This is a slab.
Just a slab.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And that's a porch at the top?
There are three footings right now after the...
Okay.
Yeah.
It was a little hard to... There weren't any flags, kind of markings or anything. So we had no real clue what we were looking at when we went, where everything is supposed to be. It was very difficult. I'm just saying that.
Do you want me to explain the order of conditions or are you...
Well, let's, why don't we get to David's questions? So this is, this is in the floodplain?
It is in the floodplain.
One hundred foot floodplain. So David, can you, do you want to articulate your question? I mean, I could read it out loud, but what's your preference?
What, actually, Kate, maybe since Rob has not had the benefit of seeing this, I'm okay if you just read the comments.
Okay. All right, so I'm just going to read this, folks. Comments. Fleetwood's general comment is that the proposed project is modest nature and that the existing LPOD at the property is currently maintained as lawn and will largely be preserved as such, with some evident riparian buffer expansion agreed to as riverfront area mitigation for the Stockbridge Conservation Commission. That said, the SBA special permit application does not include the planning board's LPOD checklist. We did get that and David did get that, so we do have that. Although this requirement may not have been clear to the applicant as the SBA form does not reference the need for... Our forms, Jennifer and I. Stay tuned. Three, the format of the SBA does not explicitly or sequentially address the items covered by the LPOD provisions, making confirmation of compliance with the provisions challenging. Four, the SBA does not complain, does not claim that the proposed activities meet any exemption of the LPOD standards and does not appear to formally seek any relief from said standards. For anybody watching this, these are posted on the town website, by the way. Five, the SBA does not appear to propose any prohibited activities as they are outlined at section six point five point five of the LPOD standards. Six, the SBA appears to comply with the provisions of section six point five point eight. Here's where you're going to want to cite plan requirements, although certain of the plans are difficult to interpret in the specific context of the LPOD provisions. As an example, the lot plan sheet L one point zero appears to depict two sets of competing elevation data, making determination of the one hundred year floodplain boundary difficult. Are these elevation data intended to show existing versus proposed grades? Is this sheet intended to be the requisite grading and drainage plan? If so, the legend of the site plan does not clearly clarify the difference between these elevation data sets. Number seven, in reference to the less than or equal to fifteen percent threshold for structures and impermeable surfaces occupying the LPOD, Fleetwood's independent analysis based on a desktop, desktop evaluation using MassGIS resources in Google Earth indicates that the LPOD on this lot is approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet, with none of it currently developed with structures. The proposed increase due to the garage and the driveway, six hundred and seventeen square feet, will represent six percent developed LPOD, well below the fifteen percent threshold. That's a good thing. Number eight, due to the minor nature of the proposed work, there does not appear to be a need for stormwater calculations or stormwater management. Additionally, no point sources of discharge are proposed. Number nine, Fleetwood understands that the applicant has committed to expanding the existing Housatonic River native buffer to thirty-five feet in conformance with the LPOD provisions. Fleetwood suggests a revised site plan to be prepared and furnished to the planning board that depicts this. Okay, that's it.
So can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
So David, regarding, regarding flood, regarding floodplain issues, were you, are you, are you looking for grading and drainage or are you looking for compensatory storage?
No, I don't think any of the comments required anything else regarding floodplain.
Okay, all right, very good.
So I guess the other question is, does the board understand what we're doing here in terms of grading and drainage? The site is, the site is relatively flat. However, we are impacting the floodplain in a minimal amount. We have provided compensatory storage and demonstrated the grading plan. And I apologize, that was probably more evident in the package submitted to the Conservation Commission. But we are providing compensatory storage, storage for the floodplain work. And that is impacted on our grading plan. We're not impacting any drainage associated with anything making its way to the river or changing the drainage pattern in any way on this property. Regarding the, the need for a plan demonstrating the thirty-five foot buffer zone, I would hope that that could be handled in the form of a condition attached to the special permit and quite frankly, not require us to come back for another meeting.
We could do, I think we could do that.
Simple graphics.
David, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I, I mean, if it's a commitment that's been, that's been made and agreed to with the Conservation Commission, it should just be memorialized formally somehow, whether that's a plan change or in a, a special condition. I don't think it really matters.
So I think, you know, the board, if they wanted to, David, they could reference the order of conditions where the, where the ConCon did make it a special condition. If that's, if that would be acceptable to everybody.
Well, we can just make it a condition. Yeah, we can just make it a condition before.
Scott and I on Goodell.
Now, I did have another question. I didn't see any elevations, Rob. So for accessory structures, they're supposed to be thirty feet? You know, we have a height limit of thirty-five feet. So what's the height of the garage?
Off the top of my head, it's twenty, twenty-six and twenty-eight.
Twenty-six and twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Carl?
Were the elevations not present? I mean, this is the same structure that went before the Historic Preservation Commission? I've seen the elevations.
Did you, you took this before the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yeah, I've seen all those elevations, but you didn't bring them.
They probably weren't included in this package because quite frankly, I didn't see in the LPOD, right?
Right, okay.
I deal with land, I deal with buildings.
Just curious.
Okay, so will you...
The Royal Commission doesn't want lot plans and you guys don't want elevations. And that's the way I interpret everything.
Are you guys amenable to, to a condition that speaks to third, no higher than thirty feet for your...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going to be seeking a variance for height, no.
Okay, so we're going to do a condition for a thirty-five foot buffer, native, native buffer planting area?
I think we referenced it as a pollinator plant, but you can...
Pollinator, you know, that's great. Okay, and, and garage, right? Thirty feet, less than or equal to thirty. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Nancy?
Regards to elevation, when we were walking the property, there was a big dip in the lot. Does that have...
So, so that big dip, it's actually really good. That big dip is right here.
Under where the garage is going to be?
Yeah, and so that big dip is actually, I wish I was there. I apologize because it's a really, you don't really very often get to see really good examples of how the floodplain, the boundary works. But in that case, that dip, that little landform, that's actually the boundary of the floodplain. So in, down in that little dip, if you get a hundred year flood, theoretically, that's where the water will get to and it follows that contour. What we're doing and what we agreed to do with the Conservation Commission, because we're displacing that amount of water with this building, we took this area and we regraded it. So we basically, that area that was high, we took it down and made it low. So now the floodwater that used to go here will go here and not impact anybody else anywhere else. That's, so that's, that's how that works.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Again, I'm sorry I missed the meeting. I, I got confused, which I have a tendency to do as I get older.
Stuff happens, it's okay.
No.
No, right, we refuse, don't ever give in.
Any other questions?
Or substitute.
Any other questions?
No, I was there.
All right, I got to look at my cheat... All right, I got to look at my cheat sheet. So we're going to ask now, because, you know, I'm going to close the public hearing and then the board can deliberate and, but now is the time to, to speak. If you have any questions. Okay, go in, go in, gone? All right, okay, so I make a motion that we close the, the evidentiary portion of the hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can deliberate now. And I'm happy to go ahead and articulate conditions if everybody feels like this looks okay. You guys can't talk now.
I'm more than my fair share here.
Does anybody have any, do you guys want to talk about it?
Well, just to update you, you know, we saw the elevations for this project at Historic Preservation and without having major issues about the proposal, we had, there were some notes that were made about fenestration and, you know, architectural elevations and, you know, I guess.
I resubmitted a.
Oh, you have, okay, great, terrific. Well, I'll afford to see them.
Yeah.
So that's where that's at.
Okay, sounds good. Wayne, anything?
No.
Nancy?
Nope, he answered my question. Are you?
I'll stop, thank you.
Liz?
I'm okay.
Gary?
Yes.
Okay, are you guys okay with my articulating the conditions? All right, so I make a motion that we approve the request for the special permit for 25 Church Street, Jane Weber, with the first condition being that the applicant will expand the existing Housatonic River native buffer to 35 feet with native plantings or pollinators of their choice. The second condition is that the garage roof will be 30 feet or, or less in height.
Do we need to have that in there since it is part of the bylaw anyway?
Yes, you do.
Why?
Because it's not indicated on the plans.
Because what?
It's not indicated on the plans.
Okay, I see.
This is a special permit, so absolutely. Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
You're very welcome.
Very nice to see everybody again and happy Thanksgiving if you don't see me before.
Okay, now we have next.
I'm going to keep this, okay, this is the, I'm going to keep this copy if I can. Thank you very much.
And we will do a better job of those comments out to the applicant teams.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you for good night.
So we did that one. I'm looking for, oh, we have another. So what about the other signed permit? Is, Jed's not here. So I guess, I don't know what happened. Was he supposed to come in then?
I thought he was.
Okay, all right, well, we'll have to pass on, we'll pass on that. Okay, so next up we have sketch plan review for, oh, okay.
This is yours.
Next, we have sketch.
Pardon me, Kate, I'm sorry.
You're done, thank you.
Are you all set with me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, good night.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next we have sketch plan review. Are you here for sketch plan? Come on up, introduce yourself. For Mohawk Lake Road, it's, I don't have a, a street number, but it's map 220-20, 220-027. And we've got two copies.
I have another copy, let me bring it up.
That's great, thank you. So has everybody had a chance to look at the sketch plan review wording?
Thank you. I had it on my phone, but it's so tiny, I can't see it.
Yeah, that's all one.
Where is?
Sure, thank you.
Can you share with Gary?
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Okay. Hi, my name is Peter Mickle. I'm an architect from New York. And you guys all know this location from, you know, being actual residents of Stockbridge. So there's no street address because as far as I can tell, there isn't a number. I mean, sometimes it's called four, but there's also something else where it's called four. So, but where it is, I think, is, you know, pretty evident from the map. It's not, the, the outline of the land is with a green polygon there. And that's about 19 acres altogether. And Mohawk Lake Road is at the low point of a valley with our site to the west, sorry, east. And over here, a much steeper wall to the west with the flat ground in here. Anyhow, you come up to the top of the hill, which is about 60 or 70 feet.
No.
Where are you? There's Mohawk Lake Road.
It's right.
Over here. Oh, that's.
Running up the middle of the.
Oh, okay.
Of the photograph there.
This is the highest point.
Right, this is, that's correct. This is the highest point. This is a.
Of this property.
Of this property, yes.
And this is essentially a ridge across here, which goes down this way to the low point here, and this is all flat ground. And this is very steep here.
Is this heading up toward Schneier's or is this heading up toward Schneier's?
It's right next to Schneier's, one of Schneier's.
This is the.
Is this the lake? Where's Mohawk Lake?
Mohawk Lake, no, no.
It's this one, okay, that's.
Chester Wood is somewhere here, and your pen is basically Norman Rockwell.
Oh, okay, that's what I just needed to know.
The botanical garden.
Oh, okay.
So we're in a sort of little triangle of Chester Wood.
Yeah, I just needed to know which way.
Right. And you feel very strongly when you're there, you feel this, this wall.
Is that the river?
And this flat ground here. So you come up and you arrive at the high point of this ridge, which is, as I say, about 70 or 80 feet above the road.
Yes, right.
I asked you if Westdale Road is on this?
Is Westdale Road on this? Is this Westdale?
Yeah, there's a road, I wish I could.
That's right.
Do you want me to take out the little iPad and start?
Is Westdale Road?
Because I can show you that.
It's farther, it's farther, so.
Westdale Road, and it comes down to a T, and if you go right, that's Mohawk Lake Road.
Yeah, I know, I was just wondering where this property was in relation to where Westdale Road hits Mohawk Lake.
Westdale Road, I think, is over, is right here.
Murray, do you know where Butler Road is? You know that Butler Road, right?
Butler Road, yes.
Yeah, so this is kind of right across, there's, in that general area.
Okay.
I mean, I think people would, would definitely value a.
Yes, I was really unsure of what to show.
I, yeah.
Because.
Kind of place where this is, but that's all right. I get the idea.
The fact that you, that you wrote a template, having a sketch plan review is really helpful to us, to me, because I'm trying to make sure I understand what the intentions of the, of you guys, the planning board and the zoning laws, the intentions are. Because I think that in terms of the literal law, we are pretty well compliant, but I do want to make sure that I understand, and that's why this is a little bit over detailed in some ways. Sketch plan review is the best we could come up with for understanding. You know, what you need, to see, to get it, moralize.
It's actually not been through sketch plan review or multifamily development before. So I did check with town council and, I mean, this is just sketch plan review. You would still need to do site plan, which you, I know you know. And in terms of the information you have here, although it's, it's non-binding because this is just sketch plan review, you're meeting the bylaw.
Right, right. So I'm just, that's why I'm saying that, on the one hand, it's, it's important to meet the bylaws. Obviously, it's obligatory to meet the bylaws. But I also want to make sure that we understand the right thing in terms of, you know, with the planning board's aims. That, because we're trying to make something nice here, basically.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, seven-member board, so why don't we go one at a time, you know, with any, this is your chance to give feedback.
So before we do that, let me just make sure I go through, because not everybody has necessarily looked through these, or perhaps you all have.
No.
Right, so let me try to explain it, because it's a little abstract.
Yes.
Without an explanation. Explanation is words.
Thank you.
That, okay.
For anyone watching this, these plans are posted on the town website.
Right, so you guys can, I'm just going to point, sort of hold it in front of me here.
You don't have your laptop.
As I say, you, you come up a hill, you know, 70 or 80 feet to the top, and you, there's a little flat ground there, and that's where you would sort of drop off your car. So there are like six little, six or nine cars here. And then this plateau is rather small, you know, let's say as big as this room. And then immediately you start going down the other side of the hill. So that, by the time you get to the house, you're completely, you know, you can't be seen from the street. You're out of the, you're just in this, in the woods, literally in the woods. And so that is the idea essentially, is that you have this house of six courts, which are in the woods altogether. And you, the kind of, there's a main walk through the middle, and you go in and then you go either right or left into the individual courts.
So Peter, are these condos or?
Well, they're going to be, the thing is, I'm not 100% sure how the, the legal ownership is going to work, because I think that we're, we're, I'm, as I said, sort of the design architect and, you know, developing the, the plan for this. But the person who's purchasing the land will use probably one and another family member uses another, so it's on, that's why I say that the structure of ownership is not, I'm not, thank God, responsible for that, but.
Who's purchasing the land?
It's a guy from New York, a British guy from New York, his name is Declan Masterson. And I, the land purchase is more or less complete or agree. It certainly has been agreed upon in, in contract. And the, the attorneys are, you know, doing whatever attorneys do. I don't want to say anything against it. But anyhow, they're resolving the problem. They're resolving whatever issues they have. But the buyer and teller.
So it's not solved.
Are in agreement. All I'm trying to say is that the actual ownership of the individual apartments, I don't know exactly how that's going to work, in answer to your question. Because somebody asked if it's a condo, and I, I'm not sure that that's, could be a condo, could be a cooperative, could be, I'm not sure how it will work, is the answer to your question.
Okay.
So I'm, you know, I'm concentrating on the physical, on what it's going to be like at the moment.
Well, one thing I'll tell you I really like is all the preserving the woodland area.
Yeah.
I love that.
Everybody who lives there will like it too.
Yeah. One question I have though is.
I got to be honest that, again, this is a sketch plan, so that just, if you think about it as a practical matter, building this thing is going to entail, you know, cutting away a little more trees than we've shown at the moment. And that, so that the, this last drawing here is, or one of the last drawings. Right, this reflects sort of, as well as we can, the intent, which is that you're nestled into the trees. And so even if, in order to build this, we're cutting down a little more trees than are shown here, we can put trees back. And you can't really see from this scale of things, but within these individual courtyard, there's lots of trees. And you can see in one of these drawings, let's see, this one, right. Okay, so just to give you a sense of the scale, this is a small swimming pool.
Where's that? Where's the swimming pool?
Let's see, where are we? Yeah, and then, again, for the moment, if you really look closely at it.
You can see that.
Which I.
Maybe I need that. Question for you, what about plate glass and bird strike?
Sorry?
Plate glass and bird strike.
Okay, see, that's.
Topic in New York right now.
And we might be, we might build the whole thing out of wood and not have any plate glass. So I, I, I realize that we, that's why I said in some cases it's way overdesigned, but it, we, it was necessary to do that in order to show you the intent. But that you, if you look at it in some views here, let me see. For example, okay, so here we look like we have, you know, 1970s or 1950s kind of modern, you know, Charles Eames houses or something like that, which I have no objection to doing that, but that's not necessarily what we're aiming for. It's just a placeholder for, to give a sense of the relationship of the.
Okay.
Of the parts to one another and to the land, because that's.
This is not the design.
To us. I'm not, I'm not, how do you say, disavowing.
It's an idea.
The design, but I'm just saying, there's another version of this. You know, I could, we could, I could spend hours doing this and show you that this, the whole thing, all done with woodhouses, wood, wood instead of plate glass.
But, but what you're showing us is the footprint.
Yeah, the footprint, the general approach to the land. And, because I think it, because in order to do this properly, thoroughly, you know, there's serious land engineering here, serious architectural work here. I mean, it's a serious commitment to make this something really beautiful. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars of, you know, professional work to get it. So that's why, before we launch ourselves into doing that, we want to make sure we're on the right track, more or less. Because knowing that, you know, there is a real plan review that comes, there is a special permit which needs to be obtained, but as I said, I tried to.
So here's the sign bag over here. He's the one you want to be looking at when you.
I have questions.
Good, good, let's hear them.
Well, is there existing driveway or road?
There is no.
There's nothing. This is just woods.
Just woods.
Okay, and then the overall footprint of this whole complex?
The overall site area is 19 acres, which.
Right, no, no, but the footprint of the proposed structure.
Footprint of the structure is 496,000 square feet.
Okay.
I mean, the properties.
Yeah. Put them up, no.
That sounds awfully high, Peter.
No, but don't worry about square feet. We'd look at, why is it how?
Sorry, we've got about, sorry, forgive me for that.
You take on the zoom.
My own.
You've got, actually.
Well, now I'm in good shoes. Okay, and I haven't actually looked at these charts in a couple of weeks.
We can calculate it for you. It's actually shown, so we've got six units. So each unit, there are two units that are 6,043 square feet. There's three, two units that are 4,414 square feet and two units that are 4,426 square feet.
Those are on two levels, all of them.
Okay, okay.
The thing is that 87,000 square, if you, it's not the truth. If you look at, in this corner, that's what I'm saying, these, that area.
14,883.
You can have it, thank you.
14,883.
By half, half. Did you do that, Carl?
The, the.
14,883.
The maximum coverage permissible, according to the zoning laws, is, you know, translating from acres back to square feet, is 827,000 square feet. That's what we would, one would be entitled to cover, according to the.
So we're in the.
We're at 496,000, but that includes an awful lot of ground.
Right, we're in the.
Ground is open to the sky.
We're looking at.
We're in the R2 district, right? Yeah. I have to look at the map?
Yes, R2.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and is the overall height from the lowest point, is that, is that underneath 35 feet, which is suspect for us?
This is well underneath 35 feet and this is well underneath 35, because the site itself.
24 proposed.
Okay, now I just see these, these, these dividing panels going higher than two, two, a two-story. Now, I just see these dividing panels going higher than a two-story building.
It says it's a full...
Where the ground is sloping...
Max height.
From 950... The ground is sloping from the low point to the high point by about the length of the building.
So here's where...
So that we're never more than 25 feet above the ground.
Above the lowest point?
It's like a jail.
We're... We are more than 25 feet above the lowest point, but we're never more than 25 feet above the...
That's very stark.
The site at the end where we are. So the site is like this, and the building steps down, never more than 25 feet, actually, from the site.
Peter? So what is this sort of...
That's a covered walk down the center where you go into your...
Jail walkway.
A jail?
Walkway.
So...
Not that I've ever been in one, but...
It's good to know where I... It's, you know, again, it's...
I'm...
It looks nice.
Just giving you a hard time. You seem like you can take it.
I can, I can. Don't worry. It's semi-covered, and I... It looks extremely rigid, the way it's thrown. And again, you know, the boundary between being rigid as it's thrown and the kind of warmth and the engagement with the woods as it's... As it feels there is what we're trying to eventually get to. But this is just a first illustration of how we're trying to...
How far... To get to there from the road, how far away is it?
You're allowed, according to my understanding of the zoning law, a driveway of 500 feet.
Right.
And we are 500 feet from the road to more or less there. So the... And again, 500 feet, you know, you can measure along the... It's just coincidental, that it's purely coincidental that when you get to the flat part of the site, the center, the high point, that is just about 500 feet if you measure. Could be 496 or 504, but it's right there. And if we have to make an adjustment, we will. But we... That is the answer to your question. And I wasn't sure exactly about... Because there must be people who have houses which are further moved from the road than 500.
Well, you can get more than 500 square feet by special permit, but we prefer... I prefer that you don't.
I don't... I don't really want to ask too many special things. I mean, honestly, I... So it's... I think we're like right there.
The idea was that, you know, by having a limit on the driveway length, that overall, you know, you prevent these incursions into these natural areas.
Right, right. So we're trying to consolidate... So our perspective on the preservation, excuse me, of the land is that we try to consolidate the, you know, human occupancy of the land in as sort of close an area as possible, so that we're not just distributing activity, human activity everywhere. And that we're also effectively making, granted, very small and probably relatively exclusive community here. I mean, this is... You know, we're trying to... There's always an aspect of sort of town planning, common planning, in any kind of architectural project, and so that's part of what we're saying. If you... Because the land, according to the zoning laws, will support... We're, you know, like, we're way, way, way underneath whatever it is that you...
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Would... So would, you know...
All that you've shown us so far, I don't think presents, I mean, an obvious blatant issue.
No, he's definitely meeting the requirements. Yeah.
You appear to be well within...
Yeah.
Your...
I think we are, yeah.
You are.
You do, and it...
Yeah, you're fine.
Good.
It's just...
Nice project.
He's talking to go-to site.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
We'll have to do any of this. We have to build this, right? And in order to build it...
We have to buy it.
We have to do all that. We have to do... Well, that part of it's not my problem.
Minor thing.
Not my problem. We have... No, we have to... We have to engineer everything. We have to sign everything. It's a lot of work to do all that, so yes.
On the face of it, you appear to have covered...
Yeah.
Things that we would be concerned with.
Yeah. So, okay, that's all we wanted to find out.
So you have... You have input from the board.
That's right.
I love the trees. I love the trees.
Yeah.
And wood is nice, but this year, we don't get involved in...
No, we're gonna... But I know it looks scary. It looks scary to me, the way it's drawn. So I understand it's scary, and it's not...
Yeah, and especially...
It's not meant to be scary. We don't... No, obviously, nobody wants... I don't want to... We don't want to scare anybody.
Especially for birds. I'm sure you followed in New York City, even Columbus Circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Well, I live...
I know that plate glass is more expensive, but it is... Apparently, it's made such that it doesn't...
I live...
You've got some choices.